Okay, seven o'clock. Uh, I'm calling the meeting to order. DeWilde?
Here.
Chisman?
Here.
Thompson?
Yeah, I'm here.
Luke Sparrow?
Here.
Nigel?
Here.
Everybody's here, that's good. All right, now the consent agenda. Notice that there are a couple of, uh, builders in the mix, including the manager. No one had any questions about those. I know like the one down on the, what are their names? East legs, they're just replacing the deck. It's going to be a little bit bigger, but not much. And, uh, so, and then, uh, we're going to bring that bricks down and hold with other building addition.
Could, could we talk about this one on down there on East leg?
Yeah.
I went in, uh, City Code seven dash one dash nineteen. It says though, you're supposed to have a thirty-five foot setback or draw a line from adjoining buildings, you know, each side of the building, a straight line. And I'm wondering if that will fit in there? And I mean, I don't want to disturb somebody in the building, but...
They tore the other one down because they had to take the screen off and give them work on it in the trailer. And it's not going to stick out any farther. He said it may be about eighteen inches wider. So it's almost going to be, so it's, it's going to be just about, the setback's not going to be different than it was. Now, that's what I understand my thoughts.
So it probably wasn't right to start?
Well, probably didn't right. I'm guessing, uh, because they're not, that's the, that's the thing about that is...
Well, we just had an issue not too long ago, a fence put in the wrong place.
Yes.
Complaint by old...
Well, if they, if they wouldn't have had to get it on the trailer and do some things, they never would have moved it and it just went into the same thing. And, uh, they asked about, I say, well, if you're, it's going to be exactly the same size and just like it was, you don't need it though, but they said it's going to be a little bit wider as far as across the front of it, if it never had. And then, uh, the additional pole street, grab a deck there now, they're going to figure to put a room behind it. All right, if you have questions about those?
How far off do you think it might be on a setback?
I kind of looked down through there. It looks like, without running a string, you couldn't really tell, you know, but, and I guess if nobody complains, but if somebody complains, what's going to happen?
I get it, I understand that, I don't know, it seems to me that, uh...
Yeah, they...
They bought the house with the, with that deck, their white back, that is, I'm sorry, now you can't have a deck that would be...
Unlocked, yeah.
Well, what is, what would our folks say? I mean, do we, do they have to bring it up to the current requirements? Or does it get grandfathered because it was existing, but now that they're redoing it, I think it has to be brought up?
We do, they had to move the trailer, the home back, which is more than...
I just, I wanted to bring it up, because we were lucky down there on that building that Mr. Smith put up, there were no houses down there.
Right, yeah.
And it's something to be aware of, there, there's a section here, there's sidewalk setbacks, there's accessory building setbacks. We need to kind of be a little aware of them, I mean...
Well, I went down and looked at it and see, I mean, I didn't measure anything, but we looked at where it was going to be in conjunction with one that they took off. And, uh, it's, it's very similar as far as that goes. They're not going to get started tomorrow. I mean, if we can vote to approve it, then I'll go down and talk to the neighbors and see if there's any issue with them. I don't believe that there will be, but we can go check if that, if there is any to do with it.
I think that would be the safest time to do.
Okay, I can go talk to them tomorrow. And that's a problem.
Go on to the treasurer's website and look at the, the mentions on the deck that was in.
Yeah, well, it's easy to figure out because the holes are there.
Sure, good, we can hit on the wall.
Yeah, oh, it's not...
Not too bad yet.
I mean, seventy-three here, what, Friday they said, something like that?
Ah, come on, Friday.
Freezing.
I think a lot of people, it, it won't obstruct the view like a building.
Right, yeah, well, if they're going to put a building out, that's...
Yeah, it's like a garage, since we've got a lot of garages around us down there.
Yeah, they're probably not in the right place, yes.
And like I say, my main concern is that we be aware of these things when we, before we approve them, so we know...
Well, I think we should, we vote to approve it, then I'll go, we'll get, talk to the neighbors, see if there's an issue with them. If there's not, then we'll just let it go as it is. So if there's an entertaining motion for the, to approve the consent agenda?
Well, I have a question on the, the bills here.
Okay.
Is this IMWCA, is that a Miss France double?
No, there's two actually, because they sent me two. There were statement seven and statement eight.
And that's our work compensation?
Yeah, there's eight installments, and I think this is the last seven and eight.
I don't know if that's, I guess regarding the work comp, um, did you notice the decrease after the removal of fire department? Did they get that adjusted on it?
They have not as of this time, they just keep sending me the statement seven to eight.
Well, I think, I think, I know it has to do with how the year's plan is different for that, but I, that's probably something to do with that issue.
Well, they're going to be here...
I mean, Wednesday.
Wednesday at two o'clock, to do a walkthrough, so this, we'll address that with them at that time.
It's a very good idea.
Because, uh, they have to fit them to their annual, look at inspection, see if the, and it should be shorter since we don't have to go to fire department and do that now, but they, yes, uh, but we will talk with them about that. Any other questions about these? We have a motion concerning the consent agenda.
Don't make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I just moved, is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
So, we're at three nays and two ayes? Is that what I heard, three ayes?
Nays.
Okay, then what do you want to do with the consent agenda? Do you want to approve it item by item? It's here, like the secretary's report, and the checks that were written, and then the voting time.
Would this be time to repeat, look at, now some apartment, uh...
Yep, no, well, I understand that, and, uh, we're in the process, and we got almost all that stuff done, as far as making sure it's up to date, as far as each one of the departments, we've looked, and I met the, the library, and they have questions, and that they're, to me, their biggest concern is they run from January to December, but our money, our budget for them, the county goes July to June. They have the cemetery board about, about some of these things, but, uh, that's where we are. We can approve these three items that we have, and then we can, as far as the financial report that, that, but, uh, the fund balances, we can not approve that.
Maybe we should do it, I'm bad, and see what we're seeing.
Concerning the minutes of the last meeting?
Do we need to make a motion for each of the buildings?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The motion carries, uh, the building permits, we'll lump those two together. Uh, the motion to accept, approve the building permits?
I'll make a motion to approve the building permits.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Uh, then we have the list of the checks, which is what we've written out in the last, this last month, what we wanted to write, we need to approve. Guarantee a motion to approve that clerk pays these bills as they do.
You have that motion?
Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Now concerning the fund balance report, which we do not have, uh, do you have a motion that we don't accept that?
I'll make a motion, don't accept the fund balance report.
Okay, is there a second?
Pardon? What is this word?
Fund balance, which isn't here, which we don't have, so it's, it's not really difficult. We, we can't approve it because we don't have it.
Yeah.
So I just need a second, the motion did not approve it.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? Motion carries. All right, moving along. Uh, we have Keith...
Sherman.
Sherman, I keep wanting to call him Keith Lewis, I don't know why. Does anybody know Keith Lewis?
If I know Keith Sherman.
Okay, good. Keith Sherman is here from Align Energy, uh, they sent us, we talked about this, uh, the franchise fee, which, uh, we discussed a little bit last time, we got some information on, I guess the thing is, we are now paying the franchise fee of one percent every month, all of us around Align Energy do, uh, but it's not going, but right now, the proceeds are, are not going to us. We get about, what, two hundred and say, a hundred and seventy-four dollars, two hundred and something like that. And the rest of it goes to other places besides us. Is that about right?
Yeah, what we're, what we're collecting right now is a local option sales tax of one percent. We're collecting, I think, around eighteen hundred dollars or thereabout. And so we collect that money every year, we ship it to Des Moines, and then by state formula, that money comes back to the county, and then it's dispersed. And Blakesburg gets point six five percent of that money back, so that means out of eighteen hundred dollars, you get less than one percent of it back, less than a hundred and eighty. If you put in a one percent franchise fee, we collect the same amount of money, it does not impact customers' bills, because we're collecting the same money, but instead it goes into this bucket, and then we issue a check directly to the city. So you would, so you would keep the entire eighteen hundred dollars, as opposed to getting a hundred and eighty, or whatever the number is, maybe it's eighteen, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a money, or the thing in front of us got back from Des Moines, and then you have time to go to the office, but, but what it boils down to is, you know, our electric franchise is up, and it's, it's basically a right-of-way permit, and so we, we ask, we get that approved. Whether or not you do a franchise fee makes no difference to Align Energy. You know, we're not advocating for it, and we don't oppose it, the city has the right, but since your franchise was up, we wanted to make sure you were aware of that, so that, uh, let's say Roberta went to a Lega Cities meeting, and someone say, well, what are you doing about your franchise fee? Well, then she says, what do you mean franchise fee? Thinking, well, Sherman never told me about that, so we don't want to have that. So we're trying to be transparent about that, this whole, whole thing. It's just something the city has a right to do, they can do one to five percent. You don't have to do anything, you know, we don't care. All we do is collect it and remit it. And we don't care if we collect the local option sales tax, and give it to the state, and you get the partial of the money back, or we collect that same amount of money, you get the hundred percent of it back. It makes no difference to us. All we do is collect it and give it back. All I know is that with property tax rollbacks and everything, may not affect this community in near as much as other towns, but, uh, we have been renewing franchises, we've had cities call us up to renew franchises early, because they want the franchise fee, they're trying to protect their interests. And, uh, five years ago, there were twelve franchises in the state of Iowa that had franchise fees. We are now at a hundred and thirty-five. Tonight, besides you, we've got three other towns, and those three are all putting in franchise fees. We just filed at the first of the month, we turned in six more. So, I mean, it's just something that cities are doing. But there are cities that choose not to do it, so we don't, you know, like I said, we don't care. Uh, the process is like if you do the local option sales tax, you have to do revenue purpose statement, and that basically states how you would use the money. And then from there, if you decide to do a franchise fee, that starts the process for the public hearing and, and the readings. Uh, you need to make sure you understand that you do not have the local option sales tax and a franchise fee. It's one or the other on the electric bill. If you do a franchise fee on our electric bills, that does not impact or affect the other local option sales tax that's collected in town, because it only affects, only the electric, uh, electric bills. So, uh, I guess I have to open up to questions, you have questions. Obviously, our interest is getting the franchise itself renewed. I mean, you, you could, you could renew, I mean, you could renew the franchise at zero percent, which is not putting in a franchise fee, and you could come in later and, and change it. Uh, some cities choose to do it later, some choose to do it right away, uh, some, you know, some to say, you know, we're not interested in all, but we'll, you know, leave the language in there and, and move on. So again, we don't care, because all we do is collect it and give it either to the state or we give it to the city.
But Keith, they need to do a franchise, right, to prove the commitment with Alliance, so Alliance, Alliance will want to invest money in the community, right?
That's part of the reason, that's what the benefit of the franchise is to us, because, you know, we make the investment, and then on the city's part, you know, they got the liability, uh, protection, identification, uh, we've got, like, if there are any kind of public improvements that we require, we, we move, relocate our facilities, we do so at no cost to the city. The important thing is, the franchise spells out how we're going to work in your right-of-way. So we just can't just go in there and just do what we, we please, and it's stipulated in there, so...
But without the franchise, though, I understand it, Alliance is not going to want to invest in new streetlights, they're not going to want to rebuild your lines and stuff like that without the franchise.
Well, it is...
Two different things there, kind of, isn't there?
Pardon?
It's almost like two different things. The franchise itself... You have to have the franchise so you continue to operate, and we want you to continue to operate.
We'll continue to operate, but...
Well, there's a franchise and a franchise fee, and I'm glad you asked the question, because don't want to get that confused, one's not tied to the other. I mean, the franchise itself is a standalone, but inside of the franchise are three paragraphs that a franchise fee language, that, that enables the city to collect a franchise fee either now or, or later. And if you don't want to do a franchise fee at all, we can strip that language out, just leave it out altogether. But then, at some point down the road, if you want to do a franchise fee, then you got to go back and reopen the franchise, and it's a whole new agreement. So that's why the language is in there at zero percent, because it gives the city flexibility to do it now, later, or never.
Could I, could I re-ask those numbers? With the local sales tax option, you said it was, what, about eighteen hundred a year?
Yeah, and I, I sent the email, I have it in front of you.
They got it in our packet last night.
Okay, okay. So it's around eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Last year, did I did this much?
Yeah.
It was the last month I got, yeah.
So what we did, we, we collect that money, and we send it to Des Moines, and it comes back by that state formula. And, and it's based on population, your tax base, your valuation, there, there are six different parts to the equation. Don't, and if you ask the State Department of Revenue about it, and you ask six people, you'll get eight different answers, you know, you know how that is. But, but anyway, you get back less than one percent based on the criteria. And, so, uh, if you want to retain all the money that we're collecting of that, of local option sales tax, what you would do is do a one percent franchise fee, because then that money goes, all that money goes to the city, we don't send it to the state.
And we would, I was trying to remember from some of the language that I read before, do we have to provide all the addresses, or do you know, like, the area that we franchise, what the address would be?
No.
Do we know which ones to...
We have our billing system, uh, the franchise, I mean, can I see the agreement in a second?
Yeah, help yourself.
I want to make sure you've got the one that's got the, just the three paragraphs in there now. Yep. And what we do now is we just ask the city for the list of city-owned accounts that would be exempt. It used to be that we would send to the city a list of addresses, and then see, we'd have to sort them out. We have a new billing system.
Okay.
So it's got the tax ID code in, so we just pull the tax ID code for city of Blakesburg, but we would need to pull out of there. By state law, any city-owned accounts are exempt, but we have to have the city verify that, so we would, like, if you did a franchise fee, we'd ask Roberta to send us a list of accounts that would be exempt. By state law, there are no exemptions other than city-owned accounts, so that's where you pick up, let's say, nonprofits, or, uh, entities that typically do not pay any kind of a state sales tax, do have to pay the fee, franchise fee, because it's a fee. Now, we could argue until the next supermoon that it's a tax, but it's actually by definition a fee, and as such, there are no exemptions other than city-owned accounts. Now, it's from the bill that was passed in, in May of two thousand nine, Senate File four seventy-eight is the bill to be exempt.
How would that affect our local elevator? They probably are a pretty big user of electricity, is that going to cause them more expands?
If they were doing any kind of manufacturing or processing, if they have any kind of sales tax exemption, that sales tax exemption would go off of that one percent. But grain elevators in themselves, you know, use it for drying grain and things, but they're not making anything typically. I'm not saying there's not something there, but, but they'd have to have a state, uh, sales tax exemption certificate. But you're right, I mean, like, in communities that have manufacturers that make widgets that say, for example, John Deere in Atumaw, and if they have a sales tax exemption, say fifty percent, then any energy that's used to make the balers, or make the lawn doors, or whatever, that they can exempt from state sales tax. And so if Atumaw were to do a franchise fee of, say, one percent, then John Deere would not have that exemption on that one percent.
And I remember reading that there was some things that had said that, like, the fee, the money that we bring in from the fee can be used for certain things. Is it very specific, what we can use the money for, just like projects or something?
I sent the revenue purpose statement, didn't I?
But I didn't know if those were suggestions or specifics.
That is what I gave, what I sent, is, that's the language out of Iowa code.
Okay, so that...
We did not draft that and say, oh, here's something you can look at. If you go to the Iowa code, look it up, that's the exact language that is in there.
Okay.
Uh, several years ago, wasn't there an issue in Des Moines where there was a franchise fee, and somebody sued?
That's the Kragness case, and they sued the city of Des Moines, and what happened? That preceded the law that has created franchise fees in Iowa. There were, there were nine cities in Iowa that had franchise fees, and they could legally do it if it was used strictly to offset the costs that, that the city incurred in supervising use of their right-of-way. But what the city of Des Moines did is they took the franchise fee, and they used it to fund law enforcement, fire, they went out and bought equipment and stuff, and that's when, when, when Linda Kragness, uh, when they raised their franchise fee from three to five percent, that's when Linda Kragness went to the law firm and sued the city of Des Moines, went all the way to the Iowa Supreme Court, and she won, so now Des Moines is having to refund that money. But what happened is cities, because of what's been happening with their finances, said, you know, we, we really would like to have franchise fees on utilities, because we have them on cable TV and phone and stuff. So in May of oh nine, that's when Senate File four seventy-eight was passed, legalized franchise fees, and put in the language for the purpose for which those franchise fees could be used. So it'd be, so going forward, cities that would have franchise fees knew exactly how they could spend the money. So you can't use it for general fund purposes for, say, salaries and, and benefits and things like that. It has to be for public improvements, or something for public benefit, public safety, streetlights, sidewalks, you can use it for redevelopment, you can use it for recreation, if you want to put in a bike trail, a swimming pool, those kinds of things are allowable to use.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Sherman? So, I understand we need to agree tonight as a vote to institute the franchise fee, then we need to set the amount, and then we need to set a resolution for public hearing next month, so the public can get their...
If you are so inclined, again, we don't care, I'm not going to tell you...
All right, if we're going to the...
But if you, if you're going to do something with a franchise fee, you have to pass the revenue purpose statement first, and then it has to be posted or published. But at the same time, you can set the amount of franchise fee, and then at the next...
Public hearing.
Then you schedule, but then you set the date for the public hearing, which could be the next month. So you could do those three things, you could do those three things tonight. Anything above one percent does increase the customer's bill by one percent, and for the typical residential customer, that amounts to about a dollar and seven percent. So if you did, if you do a one percent franchise fee, customer would not see any difference on their bill at all. I mean, you could, if you got that, tax lines, you're going to say local option sales tax, or it's going to say city franchise fee, being what you would do. If you did a two percent franchise fee, like what Eldon did, then they're actually increasing their customers' bills by one percent, and for the typical residential customers, they're going to see about a dollar and seven cents a month more on their bill. Eddie Bill did a one percent. Uh, and I forget what Liberty Bill did, I think they did one, but I think they were, they got an escalator in it, but...
Is Keith going to be here for the, are you going to be here for the public meeting next month, Keith, or can he...
Well, it depends on what it is, and it depends what they do.
Yeah, well, I understand, but, yeah. So, I talked to you earlier.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, um, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, the, the, the process of what's happening tonight isn't, whether or not they enter into the franchise fee agreement, isn't contingent upon what happens tonight. I forget the word that you used when I was talking with you on the...
Well, the, the revenue purpose statement has to be passed first, so that states how the city would use the money, is for these legal purposes. Then they would have to have a motion of what percent, and then they would set the public hearing.
Right.
But what they do tonight does not start, I mean, it starts the process, but it's not implementing the franchise fee.
Right. So nothing that happens tonight dictates what will happen necessarily next month? They could close it all, shut it all off next month?
Oh, yeah, well, there's three readings, unless they waive readings, I mean, that's, that's up to the, the council.
We can't have the public hearing until we do the other things tonight.
Yeah, so like tonight...
That's what I understood.
Yeah. Because you have to, like I said, the, the, the revenue purpose statement has to precede the action on the ordinance. But they can go in parallel, whereas you could do a revenue purpose statement tonight, set the franchise fee rate and schedule the public hearing. But you're, but by doing those things, you're not starting, you're not doing the fee tonight. That doesn't start until you've done your public hearing and then made your first reading.
Right.
And as you know, readings, things can change.
All right.
Thank you.
So you have the revenue purpose statement in your packets. It says resolution number at the top. So that would be, we would need to pass that if we were going to do this. Then we would need to agree to what percent. And then set a date, I guess we'll set a date for the public hearing. So what?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution and adopt the revenue purpose statement for these expenditures of revenues from electric service franchises.
It'd be sixteen dot eleven dot fourteen dot one.
Sixteen dot eleven dot one.
Fourteen dot one.
Fourteen dot one.
Is there a second?
Consider.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right. DeWilde?
Aye.
Chisman?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
McSparron?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now then, we would need a motion to set the franchise fee amount. It seems to me that 1% is what we're paying, but now it would be a good place.
I agree that, I'm just going to say that I think since that's what everybody's already paying and it's just going to bring the money home, I think we should start with 1%. And if you guys, in the future, feel, you know, that's always something we can do in the future. So I'm going to make a motion.
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt, I just have a question there, but I can ask it after you make your motion. And mostly for Keith, you mentioned, I forget which town started with an L, had put in theirs, and you talked about three paragraphs that defined how the franchise fee was there. But you mentioned town was a Liberty Bill or something that was headed in at 1% but they had intentions to increase it, escalated.
Yeah.
Was that written in their franchise?
Yeah, Lakota and Leonard, they decided they wanted to do the maximum or 4%. One of them was four, one was 5%. What they did, they did 1% this year. They, they're doing another percent next year, 100% the following year.
So you have some flexibility on how you write that based upon what the council would like you to do. So is it possible or does the council want to consider writing it such that they guarantee the people in town that it won't go beyond 1% for X number of years?
Well, see, if they do 1%, they can't change it without having another public hearing and ordinance, and you get to refresh the revenue purpose statement. You have to either re-adopt what you have or you do a new one. But they just can't arbitrarily at a meeting say, I make a motion to change it. They have to have a public hearing and the three readings like you would any other ordinance.
And if I understand this correctly, we can revisit it and change that part of it anytime in the 20th year.
That's section number 10 or 9?
Right, but, and that's what you said, even if we've done 0%, we could. But this at least brings the money instead of going to the state, it brings it right back to the city, so.
So...
As I was saying, I'm going to make a motion for, do I need to put an ordinance number on this?
No, I think that this is just a motion.
Okay, a motion to, to consider 1% for the electric...
Consider it set.
Set at.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I'm going to have your roll call anyway, just, all right. DeWilde?
Aye.
Chisman?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
McSparron?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now then, resolution number sixteen dot fourteen, right? No, dot eleven, dot fourteen, dot two. Will be a resolution hereby directed to publish a notice that the council proposes to adopt as a municipal code, the printed loose leaf volume of, well, that's the wrong one. That's, that's, that's later on. That'll be number three. Number two will be, I thought I had it, oh, here. Pardon? We just need to set the public hearing. A resolution set to public hearing at, I say, I would suggest it's going to be set 7:00 PM on December the, left your calendar here.
December 12.
December 12. That'll be resolution number sixteen dot eleven dot fourteen dot two. Set a proposal to adopt municipal code, that's the wrong one, too.
Okay. I'll make a motion, and I'm going to try to get this right. Make a motion for sixteen dot eleven dot fourteen dot two for a resolution for public hearing and the first reading of the Line Energy Electric Franchise Ordinance on December 12 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second to that motion?
No second, aye.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. DeWilde?
Aye.
Chisman?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
McSparron?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so the public hearing is seven o'clock on December the 12th concerning the franchise fee of the Line Energy. Moving on down here, the street report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The street report, which there was some discussion last time as to that, that it was, that the clerk and myself have done something illegal and tried to bypass the city council and do it without agreement here, and that was not true.
I would like to say we did a special meeting last year and it does have to come before the council.
Right, well, everybody, I mean, that, we did, the thing is, when you, when you put this in, you have to put down a resolution number as the year and number one. Or it won't take the rest of the report. So that's why, if we were going to try to fool the city council and not do it, at least we'd pick a date that we had a council meeting and we'd give it a resolution number that would be, but this, but this, you have to, and then they sent it back and said you had to put the names on, so we did that. But this is the street report, as you look, I hopefully you look through here to see what we did span water and income amount as it should be for, for the follow-up for next year that we will have available to do something on the streets. Not as though they needed it, but there is some things that we can do. We put some stuff in the potholes, but it didn't last, and we do avoid, but it lasted for a while. So we need to pass this by resolution. So this will be resolution number sixteen dot eleven dot fourteen dot three. That we approve the street report. The streets of the, the city finance, streets financial report.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's street financial report, sixteen dot eleven dot fourteen dot three.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. DeWilde?
Aye.
Chisman?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
McSparron?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I may go right to eleven next time, just to make it...
While we're talking at a turn.
That's right, motion carries. All right, down on our thing that we got to discuss, you have in your packet a letter from Dave Avan. Dave talked to Roberta, I spent some time talking with him last week. And we were trying to turn on some, turn off someone's water, I had him over there, he helped me do that. He said, I tend to, I'm just going to have to give you my notice. And I said, well, you, when you, when you're to that point, give me something in writing and I'll take it to the council. And so he said he'd written something earlier and his wife teared up because it was too soon. But here's the point now, that he, he's going to have a bad week this week. And, because he's got some issues piled on other issues. And so he said, please accept this letter as my resignation of the city and the position with the city of Blakesburg due to health concerns. He will be helping with writing some things down as to what is where and what gets done when about the water tower and about going from the tower to Rathburn and some of that stuff. But he, as he's able, he will help us if we need help with some things that goes, as long as he, as long as he can. Which, what David knows in his head is worth a lot more than what he does because he, and so I talked to him about that and that's a way, that what we need to do is we need to accept the resignation and we need to open up applications for this position. Yeah, or later today. November 14, 2016. So do I have a motion to accept David's resignation?
I'm going to make a motion to accept David's resignation.
Is there a second?
No, no second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And I'm going to do it. We need, we need something in the paper. We can set a date, what, 20 days, is that what we have to accept applications? Is that the number? I believe that's the number, but we get right. 20 days from today, which we can bring to the board.
Is it 20 days from today or 20 days from the time it's in the paper?
It's posted in the paper. It's your problem sometimes, we, we hope. And so we need to set that date up. So we need to, tonight, we need a motion to put something in the paper, it's turning, that we're accepting applications. And we'll date it, the final date, 20 days from whatever date they, they get it published. But I don't know, we can't know that right this second, but it should be sometime in the early 10s. And then when the applications come in, we will, I guess we're going to have to accept resumes. And then once we hire somebody, they have to fill out an application. That's what we learned.
Are we going to post anything here?
So, yeah, we'll post it, we'll post it here at City Hall and we'll probably go down the elevator and see who or two. Those are the three places, I guess, I don't know.
I'm going to say there's somehow a veterans preference, it has to be posted, I think.
Yeah, right, so we'll do whatever the law requires, we get, make sure we get that taken, taken care of. But, so I need a motion that we start this process if it's enough resumes on three places.
There's a motion that we will start the process.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign, nay. Hearing, the motion carries. I mean, you said that for years and years. All right, we brought up last month, Luke Hock and I talked to Roberta and some things about the hiring of deputy clerk. My suggestion would be to look at somebody Monday and Wednesday mornings. Roberta's here most afternoons. That would be here from, say, 9:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 1:00, so six to, six or eight hours a week. And I talked to Roberta, that clerk's position is 30 to 32 hours a week. And whatever hours, if the clerk would decide six hours, then those six hours would come away from the hours of the clerk now, was eight. And so we can still say within that law that's in our, our manual. And what we would need to do, talk to, thought about having volunteers do this, but probably volunteers as things come up.
Probably when you're gone, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I mean, something happens and then they can't be here or whatever. But we would need to advertise resumes for the position deputy clerk. And I don't even, whether one to 9:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 1:00. You can think about that, if someone make a motion that effect, we'll get that process started by posting those, that was the opening.
You're looking at just six hours then? Instead of probably three hours, 9:00 to 12:00 is three hours, two days.
Three hours, or it could be 9:00 to 12:00 or 9:00 to 1:00, whichever, I mean.
And you have, like, 9:00 to 11:00 on the other day, 9:00 to 1:00? Because otherwise you're going to have eight hours, is what I'm asking you.
Well, if it's 9:00 to 1:00 and two, Monday and Wednesday, that'd be eight hours. If it was 9:00 to 12:00, it'd be six hours. I, my, that's my suggestion. So...
I'd say 9:00 to 12:00 is plenty of time for people coming in in the mornings. Do you want one day morning and one, three in the afternoon?
She's going to be here in the afternoon.
Start, start an hour early and then they would have a chance to overlap and discuss.
No, but times, I mean, like, sometimes on Friday, Roberta's here all day, you know, to meet with whoever it is. To answer the phone, accept water bills, take messages.
What day, what dates?
Mondays and Wednesdays, I think, I mean, that's, that's my thought. So what, all we need is a, is a motion to post the opening for deputy clerk for Monday and Wednesdays, 9:00 to 12:00.
Bill, are you actually think somebody's going to write a resume and apply for a six-hour-a-week job?
Yeah.
Be surprised.
What, could you just put it, it's a six-hour position, hours to be determined? Would that pile anybody up?
Not that I know of, but, but we, while we don't want to see people say, why don't you work to 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoons or... Well, because that won't help us. They would be morning hours. We'll word it somehow, but I think that what we're looking at is someone to be here for two days in the morning.
A maximum of six hours.
Yeah, maximum of six hours.
Unless it was vacation or something possible, something like that.
So you made the motion?
I did.
And did you second it? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now then, we are, what I tried to do twice. Our recodification is done. It's supposed to be every five years, I see it's done in 2005 and 2016. So we're right on schedule. We have a copy, we're going to make another copy. There's supposed to, we're supposed to, a copy available to the office here, so there will be a copy here. I'm also going to put a copy at the library and ask you out someone, their hours, when they're, that it's there to go. When I looked through it, we, they gave us a copy and we went through. I went through it, some things that I, that I knew, that I had Jason, the ex-mayor, go through some things and a couple of the people to figure out stuff that they left out or didn't get right. And so then they, they changed all those, so nothing drastically changed, but there are some things that did change. So those will be available. We need to, by resolution, we need to set a public hearing for the, the notice we're going to approve. It says, the city clerk is hereby directed to publish notice that the council proposes to adopt as a municipal code, the printed loose leaf volume, ordinance bearing designation, city code, ordinance is 2016 and the code is on file for public inspection at the city hall office and I, and at the city library.
Do we need to give a book to the police department or the sheriff's department so they can enforce our...
I always gave them some, they, they will get one once we're done. Said notice, they, the public hearing we held at, we're going to say... Said notice, they, the public hearing we held at, we, we're gonna say, uh, we're gonna do it the same, I would suggest do it the same night, December the twelfth. And we're going to say, uh, it's gonna be at seven oh, seven, seven oh five PM. Cause if that one's at seven, on December twelfth. Twenty sixteen, we saw the council will hear arguments for or against adopting the code of ordinance as proposed and it should be published in a manner specified by state law. So what I need is a, is a motion to accept this resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution sixteen dot eleven dot fourteen dot four.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Mitchell?
Dave.
McSparren?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Chisman?
Aye.
DeWilde?
Aye.
That was almost easier. Okay, so it's approved, the fourteenth day of November.
So it is available now in the city hall?
Uh, we have one copy right now.
But when will it be available in the library?
Let's see, let's say it'll be available at the library by Thursday, cause we have to make a copy, a couple of copies. And it's not, it's a lot, two hundred and thirty pages or something. Well, so it'll be, we'll get it, we'll get it back. Yeah, they, they provide us with one copy and then we, they give us an electronic copy so that we can make copies, whatever. Okay, uh, moving right along down here, approve the new library board member. Do you know who that is? Hold, if you're, hold on, I'll find it. They had one move away and they're looking for another mail.
They didn't send us a?
Uh, they just sent a text, which is their own fault, so we'll find it.
Everyone just sent us a copy, right?
Yeah, they, yes. No, I don't have it, so we're not gonna approve it tonight.
Ed, do you know how many, you don't have to know who it is?
I don't know who it is.
Oh, I was hoping you'd know.
Maybe we could prove it as a mystery person.
Well, let me, let me, uh, leave a phone call.
We need to generate a hard copy of that.
Yeah, they didn't send, they didn't send us one, so we have it on file, but. Who's the name of the library person that you want approved as a board member? Pardon? I can't hear you. That, what, you can't make a phone call, can you? You're on your cell phone? You can make calls and you can answer calls, you just can't ever talk to anybody. Excuse me just a minute.
Stick your head out for a second.
I'd actually had a text or two from you. I think it was from. Uh, we're not gonna do it. Today is not here, they didn't send us anything, so. I have asked that somebody, a motion we table, a new library person?
Make a motion, we tie a table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Is there any old business? New, new business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion we adjourn. Is there a second to lead out of?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, means adjourn.